Uh. Wait, our city clerk? I was waiting for him here.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the West Melbourne City Council to the meeting to order June 20th, 2023. If you'd stand for the pledge in a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We have roll call, City Council, please.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Dittmore. Councilmember McDowell.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Great. It's good to have everyone here tonight. I'd like to welcome everyone to the West Melbourne City Council meeting on this 20th day of June, 2023. Members of the public are welcome to speak on any issue, whether it's on tonight's agenda or anything that's important to you. Each person who wishes to speak should fill out a speaker card. They're located by the front door on your right there and give it to the city clerk ahead of time. After you've been recognized to speak, you'll have three minutes at the podium. Please state your name and address clearly for the record. Please address all your comments through this chair. Our first item tonight, we just had a budget workshop, but our first item on the regular City Council meeting is we have some new employees. Candace Blake, do you want to introduce your new employee?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
As you know, I'm Candace Blake, your finance director. And so we had a new employee who started with us last week and came back this week. He will be filling the position as our utility billing operations manager. This is Emidio Laboy Pacheco. He comes to us with a vast history of leading customer service teams and being able to kind of rise up in those ranks and take that on and run really strong teams. So we're very excited to have him. So I will leave it to him.
All right.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here, happy to have the opportunity to serve the city of West Melbourne and the citizens and think she said everything about me. I don't like to talk about me. So if you have any questions, just.
Where did you move from?
I live in Palm Bay. I moved from Puerto Rico back in 2008.
Okay.
Been living in Palm Basins.
Great. Super. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Mark Picorillo, our facilities, our parks work director. Want to introduce his new employee.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce two members of the Public Works team. This is Jay Squire. Jay was hired as a equipment operator for Streets and Drainage. And this is Carl Riley. He was hired as a facilities technician at Field of Dreams. Both come with extensive backgrounds in their fields, and we're very happy to have them here.
Great. Excellent.
Good to be here. Appreciate you guys giving me a job.
All good.
All right. Welcome, welcome. Let the fun begin, yes.
I have a little less than that to say. If you have any problem with this building, let him know.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. All right. Our next items are public hearings. We have four public hearings. We're going to call items C and D up because they have something to tell us about their property on Southeast Corner, Ellis Road and John Rhodes Boulevard. This is talking about the racetrack.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Tom Sullivan with the Gray Robinson Law Firm. I'm here on behalf of Racetrack. Just to be brief, mayor, we are requesting a continuance tonight. We'd like to come back at your July 18th meeting. And the reason for that is we've got our land use change and our rezoning requests on your agenda now. Those are the items we'd like to continue, but would like to add into those requests a development agreement that we would work on with staff and Mr. Carey and bring that back that would have some additional detail that would kind of tie this down a little bit better. There's a little bit of a misunderstanding on my end as to why we didn't have that as part of this request tonight, but we'd appreciate your indulgence just to come back in a month if you would. So happy to answer any questions, but that's really all we had to say tonight.
Any questions? Yeah, I do have two speaker cards also. If they still want to speak, we'll find out.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Bobby Seigler, do you want to speak?
Yes, thank you. I have a shop on John Rhodes Boulevard. I've been at that location for 30 years. When I first moved here from Miami, John Rhodes Boulevard was mostly fruit groves, and I've seen a lot of development, including apartment buildings, which are really bad. But now with this proposed gas station, it's pretty much catty corner from the warehouse complex. And already, between, I would say, 3:00 and 6:00, traffic backs up on John Rhodes heading north towards Ellis for all the people wanting to get on the St. John's Heritage Parkway. There's already, when you get off of I-95 at 192, as you're driving north on 95, the sign says that there's six gas stations right there. But if you continue east on New Haven, there's a BP that's not accounted for. There's a Sam's when you get down here to the corner of Minton, you've got Cumberland Farms. If you go out Sheridan Street off of John Rhodes, you've got a BP down there. If you go out towards the O'Gally area, there's a couple of gas stations there. I just feel that with the amount of traffic already on John Rhodes Boulevard and the number of gas stations in the area, there's no reason for another one.
Right.
That's my say on that.
All right. Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Russell.
My name is Brian Russell. My address is 700 South John Rhodes Boulevard, Unit C2, Melbourne, Florida 32904. And I believe on that card you have my email address and if you have a telephone number, be glad to give it. What I wanted to share with you is, like Bobby, I have been at the John Rhodes Commerce Park for over 30 years. I own approximately 60% of that business park. I'm the president of the association. I also own the three-plus acres behind that business park that's already vested for another five buildings, in other words, double the current capacity of the John Rhodes Commerce Park. And the land use that the gas station Racetrack would like to take over is currently designated as light industrial, specifically warehouse office, and I would like it to remain that way. The reason being, as Ms. Seigler pointed out, we've got, within an exit of John Rhodes Boulevard exit, there's at least 12 gas stations. That intersection of Ellis Road and John Rhodes Boulevard, if you've ever been down it, at 3:00 in the afternoon, the traffic to get on the freeway starts just, just west of Wickham Road on Ellis Road and backs up all the way to John Rhodes Boulevard. As you come off the freeway, as you exit the freeway going south, often you have to wait two or three lights to be able to exit to the left to get on John Rhodes Boulevard and have to immediately move over to the right because that's the only lane that goes through John Rhodes Boulevard. And so there's been a ton of accidents already at that intersection. Quite frequently, the 18-wheelers that turn at that intersection go across the curb because they can't make that turn. It's just a poorly designed intersection. Once they get started with the expansion of Ellis Road, which I don't think is going to happen in my lifetime because there's a problem with funding, there's a problem with logistics, there's just a lot of problems. But once it does begin, Ellis Road will be converted to a one-lane road from John Rhodes Boulevard to Wickham. And FDOT states that that's going to be that way for at least a year. And so that's going to divert traffic down John Rhodes Boulevard to Ellis Road and down the next freeway exit to O'Gally. It's just going to create a huge traffic mess, as it did when they were building that intersection for several months. Everybody had to divert, and it created a huge traffic problem. The other issue was, is I attended the planning and zoning meeting last week, and in that presentation, Mr. Sullivan, who's the attorney for Racetrack, he implied that the city of Melbourne is on board with them putting in a gas station. In fact, he stated that they've gotten permission to tap into the Forest Main that belongs to the city of Melbourne. And I happened to be in Melbourne at the building department this morning, and I was going through some stuff which are unrelated to this situation or this circumstance, and I happened to ask somebody, I said, you know, do you know what's going on across the street from the John Rhodes Commerce Park? He says, yeah, I understand Racetrack is putting in a gas station or trying to put in a gas station. I said, yeah. I happened to go to their meeting. I happened to listen to what they had to say. And he said, he said, I understand that the city of West Melbourne approved the gas station. And I said, quite to the contrary. I said, I was there at the meeting, and I can tell you that the city of West Melbourne denied the zoning request or the change in the zoning request. And I was then told that the city of Melbourne feels the same way that you do. In fact, they told me, it's good to hear that the city of Melbourne and the city of West Melbourne are on the same page on this initiative. And then the other thing he said was, no, they do not have, they do not have permission to tap into the Forest Main. And so, you know, I just thought, you know, these were, if not outwardly said, it was implied in that meeting last week that Racetrack and city of Melbourne were just kind of cool about the whole thing. And that's certainly not true. And so I'm not sure why this meeting got postponed to July 18th. I'm not sure why they're asking for a continuance, but my request is that their request be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Dittmore, we'll close the public hearing section.
Thank you, mayor. Before I make a motion to continue, I just want to ask the city manager one question. Are we going to, are you or has staff coordinated anything with the city of Melbourne on this issue, communicating? Yes? Okay.
So Director Fisher, do you want to answer that one at the podium into the microphone?
Kristy Fisher, Planning Director for city of West Melbourne. When Racetrack first approached us, we did it on a, excuse me, a joint Zoom call with the city of Melbourne and Racetrack and us, you know, talking about sort of the logistics, you know, it's two jurisdictions, what's going to happen, what are the processes, is it allowed, you know, by right, meaning is it automatically allowed as a gas station in the zoning district in Melbourne? The answer was yes. Our answer was no, it's not automatically allowed. They have to rezone, do a future land use amendment. So I want to say that was like four, maybe five months ago, and we've had some communication since then. Mostly, it was, I want to say, like, two weeks ago, I let their planning staff know that we were going, you know, to the Planning and Zoning Board and to City Council. I know that sometimes they will look at our agendas and whatnot. So like I said, I coordinate with the planning department, you know, mostly, and I believe Mr. Carey also coordinated with their city attorney. So yes, there's been some communication.
Okay. Mayor, I will make a motion that we continue this hearing to the date certain of July 18th.
Thank you. We have a second. Second, Rose. Any discussion? I just want to say, I know this is a very complicated ask in the sense that we have two different jurisdictions. We have county roads. We have an intersection that will need some improvements, I'm thinking, as the gentleman said. We have Ellis Road, that's the number one priority of the TPO, to get four-laned. There's a lot of moving pieces here. There's water from either West Melbourne or Melbourne going there. There's sewer from one of the, one of the two cities. There's merging these two lands or changing the plan on this. So it is a very complicated issue, but if they bring back all the information, if they do continue this, then we listen to it and vote yea or nay. It's not that complicated, I don't think. It's a lot of pieces to factor in because it's not as simple as taking a piece of land across the street and doing this. We have, again, multi-jurisdictions working together, and that's kind of a beautiful thing if that ever happens. So we'll hear more about it at that time. Any other things? Okay. Motion is second on the floor. All those in favor postponing this to the next meeting, all those in favor, second by saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Our next public hearing is revisions of Chapter 72 signage for certain zoning districts.
Okay. Mr. Bradford, I may need your help with this one. It's a show. Can I do a show?
Sure. Yeah, what you want to do is for Zoom.
There's a movie?
Share the whole screen rather than just a program.
Want me to get out of here?
Yeah.
And then share screen?
And then it'll be the entire screen, so you can just click share.
Ah, okay.
There you go. Yeah.
Okay. This is a staff-initiated code change, and I will try to move this bar so that, I don't know if I can move it so that it's out of the way. This is, thank you. In 2012, I think that's supposed to be 2017, '27, but in 2017, there were some changes that were made to the sign code. So we've just listed some of those changes that have been made over time, just to let you know that, you know, here we are in 2023. This is not forward. On here? Okay. Sorry. So what's changed? Really, this is mostly about that we have some zoning districts that are newer than 2017, and they were not listed in the sign code. Thank you. So we put them into the four zoning districts into those particular sections. The first section has to do with temporary signs. And again, you can see with the underlining and a little bit of the strike through, you know, what we're going to do in that particular sentence. But then, you know, like we say in the bottom, everything else in this section stayed the same. For the second change, it's permanent onsite signs. And again, you can see with the underlining and the different color language and stuff that it's really just referencing those zoning districts. And then digital billboards, we also made sure we included those because we do have some properties that are within, you know, that digital billboard area next to I-95. And then lastly, we've got like a chart. So we made sure that in that chart, we also had the summary of the changes. What I have italicized on this slide is that the Planning and Zoning Board did conduct their public hearing on June 14th, and they did recommend that you all approve the sign code changes. We did the advertisement, just like we had done with Racetrack and everything that comes before you. So in conclusion, the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation was for council, if you so desire, to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-11, amending Chapter 72 signage by including new zoning districts, the CNH, CW, IB, and Gateway interchange for commercial signage. And if the city attorney could read the title of the ordinance, please.
Thank you. This is ordinance number 2023-11. An ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Broad County, Florida, amending Chapter 72 signs, Section 72-10, temporary signs with permits required. Section 72-14, permanent onsite signs. Section 72-15, off-site digital signs. And Section 72-18, sign regulation summary chart of the code of ordinances to provide for sign requirements for the CNH, Commercial New Haven, CW, Commercial Wickham, IB, Integrated Business District, and Gateway I, Gateway Interchange, zoning districts, providing for suburbability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody from the public wish to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-11, amending Chapter 72 signage.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, second by saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries 7-0. Next item is 10B, replace Chapter 66 administration.
Okay. Give me one minute, please. Hopefully, I don't need Tom again.
Hopefully.
Um, okay, that's not it. What did I do wrong? Because mine, mine is this one, this 10B.
Break time.
Yeah, that's what I did. Share, right? Oh, okay. This one. And so that should come up. He's magic. Okay, this is another staff-initiated code change, and it's really not as daunting as the title says, you know, deleting Chapter 66. This is really more a reorganization. And this started with the old comprehensive plan. We just didn't have people to help me in bringing this forward, so now it's here in front of you all. So let's start with, you know, the reason why we did some of these organizational changes is that, you know, there's been numerous changes to this code since 1997. Whenever you have things piecemeal and you're not looking at it in its entirety, it does become disjointed. And then, you know, we're striking through all the old chapters so that when Cynthia Hanscom sends this to Munich Code, there's not a lot of confusion like there has been sometimes. So staff is proposing the creation and adoption of Chapter 64. And again, it's, you know, alphabetizing just simple stuff like that, alphabetizing the sections. Intent statements are always good to have in a chapter so that people can understand the reason why you have the chapter. There were some things that we had to do to sort of align it with the city charter stuff, with the organization of city boards. There was a requirement for a supermajority of council with a petition, and then we created some tables. Again, this helps, you know, the user in following what the different processes are. So this is the intent statement. I'm just going to kind of run through some of what we have. So anything I have italicized in the next few slides is new wording. And the same thing here with the land development regulations, we also give the intent statement. And then there was a section that didn't identify the building department as the party who gives certificate of occupancy. And I think that needed to be specified because a lot of times people will contact me and ask if we're the ones who do it. And that way, you know, if it's 10 o'clock at night and some engineer is looking for it online, it's already there, and they can read it. Okay, the organization of city boards, again, this was sort of making sure that we were consistent with the charter provision. This had to do with the rezoning request and that petition language that we had in the code. And Mr. Carey could certainly talk to this more, but none of the attorneys that the city has had since I've been here in 2007 ever liked this. They thought this was something that was open for legal challenge. So I think it's best if we just eliminate it. This is an example of a table about the different processes. You can read the column. It says application type, and it tells you, you know, some of it. It's not the whole table. It's just giving you an idea of what the table has. And then the comprehensive plan section was really old. It was from 1988, so we needed to just basically say we follow Florida statutes. And then we did create another table about the reviewing entities, and it's a summary of the development processes in one table. And then this one, this table 6403, really has more to do with notice and advertisement requirements. And I went over this with both Mr. Carey and Cynthia Hanscom to make sure that we're consistent with what, you know, we're allowed to do now with Florida statutes. And lastly, the Planning and Zoning Board also heard this last Wednesday, and they recommended that council approve, it shouldn't say sign code, but it should say the administrative code changes. So in closing, if you also desire to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-12, deleting Chapter 66 administration in its entirety and creating Chapter 64 administration, and if you could give the city attorney a chance to read the title paragraph, please.
Thank you, Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 2023-12. An ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Broad County, Florida, deleting Chapter 66 administration in its entirety and creating and approving a new Chapter 64 administration, providing for suburbability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is anybody from the public wish to address city council on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion. We approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-12, creating Chapter 64 administration and deleting Chapter 66 in its entirety.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, mayor. You said you created the tables. Was, are they consistent with what they have been in the past, or did you make any changes? Who approves what?
No, we didn't make any changes. We had to be consistent. So for example, like with the multifamily, we made sure that we included, I think it was the ordinance we approved two or three years ago with the 50 units. So that's definitely in there.
So it's consistent with the.
It's consistent. It's just organized in a table. Instead of a reader having to go through each section, they can see it sort of all in one table. Because sometimes I have to say to developers, kind of like with Racetrack, okay, you have to go through rezoning, and you have to go through comprehensive plan. Well, now they Well, now they can see those items, you know, all in one table instead of having to go to 10 different sections in the code.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have we got any calls on this? Because I know that Home Build Association put out an alert to all their members. Any feedback at all?
No, I haven't. That's interesting that we got that, because I haven't had any, anybody call.
Okay, good. They must agree. Ms. Adams, you have your light on?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick note, because one of the things that I had talked with the city manager and the city attorney, when they were both new and coming on board, was that I'd love to see our city do, you know, frequent checks in on our code and, and updating that to reflect the needs of the city. So this was very exciting, and I wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, second by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. That concludes the public hearings for tonight. Next, we have the public forum, where speakers are allocated three minutes to address state council. Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards, all right. We'll go on to item 12. That's consent agenda. Consent agenda, we have the minutes for June 6th, and adopt resolution number 2023-09, rescinding the Recreation Impact Fee Agreement for Legacy Apartments. Do we have a motion? Ms. Young?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Deputy Mayor Frampton?
Second.
All those in favor, second by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. And now, we're up to action agenda. Item A, professional service task order for the fire department financial feasibility study.
Peter, you're up. Hopefully, you're listening on Zoom and you're getting ready. So I'll introduce you real quick, and then I'll turn it over to Pete Napparelli, who is with Stan Tech and going to walk us through this professional services agreement or task order for the fire feasibility study from the financial side. And so, to, about a month ago, city council was discussing the next steps of the fire analysis study that was performed and, and moving towards the direction of, of implementation of a West Melbourne Fire Department. We suggested that we reach out to firms in the area that do this kind of business and put together a, a financial feasibility. We reached out to Stan Tech. We have a relationship working with a different division on the water side of the rate analysis for our water plant, and so we thought it'd be a good fit. Finance Director Blake and myself had some meetings with their team, and we thought they were the right group to come forward. And so with that introduction, in your packet is the professional services agreement or task order for Stan Tech for $30,400. And due to some weather, Pete was going to join us in person, but he has, the modern technology of Zoom is with us. So Pete, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, you're coming across just fine. You're, you're live in the council chambers.
Perfect, okay. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for that introduction, city manager. My name is Peter Napoli, I work with Stan Tech Consulting. I appreciate you guys accommodating me virtually. I'm sorry, I, I wanted to make it in person, but it, but it just didn't work out logistically today. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the task order that we submitted to the city manager and the finance director, but I'll just give you a brief overview of what we're proposing. When they, the city manager and the finance director approached us, it sounded like you guys were interested in looking at the feasibility of starting your own fire department from a financial perspective. It looked like you had, well, I know you had already gone through the process of, of hiring a professional firm to run the numbers on what it would cost operationally and from a capital standpoint to establish your own fire department. But, but really, I think the next step is looking at that in the context of the general fund financial forecast, so looking at a five to 10-year financial forecast of your city's general fund, just from a baseline status quo perspective, how are you guys doing financially? And, and then fit the component of establishing a fire department and the costs associated with that into the general fund forecast and see what, what would the impact be on millage rates? What would it look like from maybe a fire assessment standpoint if you were to investigate and, and entertain options regarding establishing a fire assessment district? And essentially, that's what, that's what we're proposing to do in this task order, is to give you guys some, some clarity on those options that are available to you, help you quantify what it means to the general fund, and then look at different funding options even related to cash versus debt, maybe debt funding the startup costs, cash funding the operational costs, or any, any combination of those two. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. My experience includes setting up fire assessment special districts across the state. I also do general fund analyses for a, a, a number of cities across the state. I've worked in Brevard County before. I currently work for Cocoa and for Palm Bay, helping them with a number of different financial studies. So I, I'm happy to help you guys and looking forward to the opportunity.
All right, any questions? Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. So the scope of services, this has always been kind of a area that I'm trying to understand. You're going to do the fiscal credibility, so to speak, and then some options for funding. Are you going to scrutinize what information was provided? Will you have that in the scope of services? And if it's in there, I apologize.
It is not. I'm not an expert when it comes to, when it comes to estimating the operational costs of a fire department. And, and that's what that firm that you, you guys had hired was, and forgive me, I forget, CPSM, I believe the name of the firm was. They specialize in providing you the, the, the operational costs and, and estimating the capital costs associated with that. I'm more of an expert in, in forecasting general fund revenues and expenses, in building financial models that kind of facilitate different scenarios and help you estimate the impacts. But I will, I will, I won't offer any scrutiny of the, the, the cost estimates that that firm provided. I'll have to rely on the fact that they, they are the best and possibly the best in the business, and they, they know better than anyone else.
Okay, thank you. I just need that clarified. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dittmore, you're up next.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Would you be able to provide us, as part of your analysis, the, what the, a, a cost comparison for the millage rate based upon if our taxpayers, right now, our taxpayers, and you'll have that information, but I believe it's like 5.5 million or close to that number is what our taxpayers are going to be paying for the fire services. Were you going to be able to do the comparison as, as to what the cost would be versus what they're actually paying now in millage, in the terms of millage? Because one of the first things, if you, when you bring back the millage rate, you're going to say, well, our millage rate's going to go from, you know, 2.08 to, you know, 4.3 or something. We need a, a real good comparison to say, well, if the taxpayers were paying it through the millage through us, and then we were paying it, then it would be this, this dollar amount. Are you going to be able to do that for us?
Yeah, absolutely. That's part of what we're proposing to include is, is kind of a, an impact to property taxpayers under each scenario. I know that currently, they pay fire assessments through Brevard County, and then there's also a millage component with an MSTU through Brevard County for fire services. So that would essentially be replaced by either an, an increase in your own city's operating millage plus a fire assessment or a fire assessment. We can run any of those scenarios and, and show you what the estimated impact would be. I would caution you that from an assessment standpoint, those numbers would be really speculative. You can't really understand what a fire assessment would be unless you did a full-blown fire assessment study, and that's something that you wouldn't do unless you were much closer to actually having your fire department begin. It's, it's something, a fire assessment, you can't really charge a fire assessment to property owners until you're providing fire services, because otherwise, you'd be, you'd be charging for a, a service that doesn't exist yet. But I can run some very preliminary numbers, looking at your, the profile of the city, and, and maybe give you a rough estimate of a fire assessment maybe in the range of $100 to $200 per single-family household, something like that. But it's nothing you can hang your hat on and adopt, it's just kind of a, a rough estimation. And, and, and really, it's important to note with fire assessments, the main difference being you, you can charge all property owners the same amount, whereas millage rates and property taxes scale according to taxable value. So that's a, it's a really different mechanism for collecting funding, and it is something that you guys can consider, and I'll help you with that, because I'm, I, I definitely specialize in that area.
Thank you.
This is Mayor Rose. I have a question in terms of whatever the millage rate is today, since we have Save Our Homes, can we go from let's just round number two mills to three and a half mills? Because that's more than the 3% cap. So how does that work with the fire department?
Yeah, and I would, I would, I, I would definitely ask the city attorney to speak to this as well, but it's my understanding that you can increase the millage above three, three, the 3% cap. It's, the, the cap is in regards to taxable value. So I save our homes, homesteaded property in the city, the taxable value can't increase year over year over 3%, but you could increase your millage rate by 50%, and, and I believe that their property taxes would increase proportionally. But I, I, I'm not an expert in that realm, so I would definitely check with the city attorney on that.
All right, yeah, he's an expert in that one. He's laughing. So to raise money to start a new fire department, what are the different options that we have?
So it looks like, it, it, it looks like the burden of starting up the, the fire department and, and funding it upfront would be on the city's general fund, and you could, and, and it's very capital intensive, so I believe for the, those capital projects, you could explore debt funding options and, and spread that cost over a period of 10, 15, 20 years, maybe 20 years is too long for those assets, but 10 or 15. Or you could, you, you could try and cash fund, and under those situations, you would have to increase revenues proportionally in order to cover it, at least in the near term. So you would have to look at a millage increase, and really, that's one of the only options because you can't collect assessments before the fire department is established. Once you start delivering fire service to the residents and you're no longer included in the MSTU and the MSBU in Brevard County, then you can start charging your own fire assessment for fire services, and then perhaps relieve the millage rate at that point, and, and maybe proportionally come back down on your millage rate. So really upfront, as you would have to, you know, spend the money to get the, the fire department in service before it's actually in service, you're going to have to fund it out with general revenues.
So basically, pay for our current service and have our department running, so kind of paying like double, I guess, is what you, for a year or two?
Yeah, and, and, and part of this analysis, I was talking with the city manager, is going to be doing a kind of a cost benefit analysis on that, and looking at, you know, is it, is, what's, is it worth it to the city to pay for both at the same time, and, and just quantify how much that's going to be? And then, with the, perhaps, if you do have savings by moving to your own city-funded fire department rather than the county fire department, how mu, how long would it take for that savings to cover the initial upfront cost of kind of double funding both, you know, county fire services and then funding the, the startup costs of setting up your own department?
So your financial forecast, how far in the future are you going? I mean, we have enough trouble forecasting in the next year or two with the, where the economy is and possibilities there. When you're going out 10, 15 years to, so how, how are you going to do that?
Usually, I, I, I do five to 10-year forecasts for general funds. The 10-year forecast is, is really more of, from a planning perspective, if there are large significant, significant capital projects on the planning horizon that are outside of five years, I'll do the 10-year forecast. But, but really, outside of five years, it's hard to provide accurate information in regards to, to forecasting things like taxable value. There's a lot of uncertainty when it comes to that. Since it's so closely tied to the economy, if I could predict what taxable values we're going to be in five years, I, I would be on a beach somewhere probably with, with a pina colada. So no one can predict it, but you can, I give ranges of, you know, conservative estimates. And typically, we err on the conservative side. We look at your historical trend and how, and, you know, we take certain things into consideration, like how close to build-out are you, what kind of development do you have on the horizon, and what anticipation do you have for, for redevelopment in the area? And those things factor into our, our taxable value increase. So that's a, a big part of the, the, the financial forecast for a general fund, obviously. It's the, that's the variable that changes every year, and then the millage rate is up to you guys to change every year. And then, the other, the other components of the, the model are, are much easier to forecast, in my opinion. Utility taxes, sales tax, all those other revenues, charges for services, et cetera. And then on the expense side, there's literally, there's, there's usually a lot more information when it comes to projecting salaries and benefits in the departments and operating supplies, capital improvements, et cetera.
Very good, thank you. Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for taking this project on, if, if that's what the council votes for. How many, how many stations are you predicting? I mean, how many stations are you doing this report for? One, two? Or did we give him a dead number, a dead-set number?
Yeah, so we'll work with him, and he'll have to run the analysis. There are, you know, the, the alternative, fire, fire alternative report gives a couple of variables, so we'll have to work with some of those variables to put into the equation.
Okay, thank you. And then, on page 13A-2, in the first paragraph, you're doing your projections of operating costs and cap costs. The capital cost, again, is going to depend on how many stations we're looking at, and where are you going to get the numbers for the capital cost? I mean, we have to start with buying the land. We don't even have that, and we'll have to get the land for however many stations we're going to have. So are we going to give him the capital costs of how many engines we're willing to buy? How is he going to have at least a number to start with?
Yeah, so, so that is in the report. Those, those estimates and those costs are put together into the, in the report that was done and presented here at the?
In the old report?
In, in the?
Oh, those are the numbers he's going to work with? All right. Okay.
In the report. And so, you know, we can work with that. His analysis is going to give us the benchmarks to work off of, and then if we can decrease that capital cost or that, or, or increase that capital cost, we can then work from there, but he'll give us those benchmarks to work off of.
All right, thank you. Thank you for letting me know it's the old report. And also, I, I know that you are aware of our, our 3%, but we don't want to jump to the 3%. We just, we had a whole conversation here about, about rollback, and, and we kind of like that, and we realize that those days may end, but being able to go just right up to the limit and just kind of stay there just because it's legal and we can do it, doesn't always mean it's the right thing to do, and, and I'm really sensitive to that. So I think you have your work cut out for you. Thank you.
Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of follow-up things. There was some talk that we were looking at probably, possibly spreading this out and taking our time to do this, but listening to you speak here, it just reminded me that the longer that we wait to start the, start operations, will delay us in collecting the, hopefully, will be a fire assessment fee rather than millage, but we won't be able to collect those fees until we actually start. So if we push back five years or six years and take our time, we're going to be actually carrying that note. carrying that note, uh, for the capital costs even longer before we can actually collect our first dollar for the oper- for the operations. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. That's how I understand it. Um, in my experience, um, I've never seen a city collect a fire assessment fee unless they're providing fire services at that time.
And I don't think we can, can we? No, we cannot. Yeah, so we, we're not going to be able to do that. So that, that's the, uh, the, the one thing that, that we have to look at. And so you're suggesting that we might be able to do a, um, to cover the initial, um, if we were to, to do funding, say through a, um, a bond, if we went out to bond to pay for some of these things to get those things started, then we'll have to make those payments. And then one way we could do those payments would have to be either figured into the general fund cost, either through our reserves or actually through, uh, raising the, uh, the millage to, to cover that cost. Is that an option, a debt? Is, is, these are multiple options?
Correct. And, and, and to be honest, those are really the only options that are available to, to a city a- as far as raising funds outside of, um, special assessment funding. Uh, so in which, as, as we just discussed, that's, uh, impossible upfront until you start operations. So really it's, it's just reserves and, and property taxes.
So if we were going to do this, uh, we would have to do it, uh, in a timely manner to save taxpayer dollars to, so the taxpayers aren't, essentially aren't paying twice. They're paying their fire assessment fees to the county and then also paying us for the startup costs. So the longer we delay that, it's going to cost the taxpayers more. So there was a three-year plan to get this up and running. Uh, initially I was supportive of, you know, spreading this out over a period of time, but if it's going to cost the taxpayers more than I'd say we'd stick to the, uh, what the, uh, the folks have put together, the, uh, uh, the plan for us and, uh, and take it from there. All right, thank you.
Um, Mr. McDowell, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Peter, on this, um, what do you refer to this process? Is this a assessment? I mean, just in, I, I see this as a proposal for a general fund sustainability and fire department feasibility, but what actually are you doing? What's it called?
What do you do? What is it that you do?
The reason, the reason is, is because one is I'm wanting to know how long it's going to take you to do it, because I didn't see that in here. And then the second part was what are, in your experience, and it sounds like you've got experience, showstoppers on this? What are the things that we have to look out for as, uh, consumers that when you get the report back that says, oh, that's a red flag, that's a red flag?
Sure, and, um, uh, to answer one of your questions, three to six months, I would propose, uh, as a timeline for this project. Um, essentially, I, I, I did my best to title it, but I called it the general fund sustainability analysis. That's often how we refer to our just general fund forecast. Cities will hire our team when they know their general fund is, um, facing funding issues in the near future and, uh, we come in and, and help present options to them to, to correct cash flow deficits. Um, I'm proposing that to be part of this so that you have a baseline context of where you're at financially as, as far as the general fund. If you, currently your operating millage is sufficient funding for your ongoing, um, expenses and capital expenses, then you can use that kind of as a starting point to evaluate the different options for layering in these fire department costs and how they're going to impact the millage rate. If you have a serious funding issue underlying already, that's going to affect this, your ability to layer in those fire department costs and the options, uh, and the severity of the impact to the taxpayers. So that's why I, I kind of added that, uh, we're going to set up a baseline financial forecast of the general fund, where it stands today with the current millage rate extended over a five, five to ten, uh, year, uh, projection period. And then the fire, fire department feasibility is the component where we're, we're kind of adding in a module into our financial forecast where we layer in the startup costs, layer in the ongoing operational costs, and then we have the ability in our financial model to switch on or off debt funding for certain portions. And that, um, estimates the annual debt payments rather than the upfront costs and, um, and these kinds of, uh, these kinds of scenarios would, would also be modeled on the, the impact to the taxpayer. So, uh, that's my best, uh, best attempt to kind of describe the, the holistic approach to, to, uh, to the proposal.
And it's actually in preparation for the bonding? If we had to go out and get the money, depending on what you show, that will have a direct impact on-
Right. Kind of all part of the process. In order, you know, in order for there to day, to be a day where, uh, the, the debt council, uh, comes before this board and is asking for them to approve, um, the bidding that happened for a debt issuance, you've got to back up all the steps in order to get there. And so this is, this is, you know, step one was the, the analysis that we did to see if we could even do a fire department. That, that obviously came back that we could. Uh, the next step is now the financial feasibility. So again, um, you know, looking out for, for items that would, uh, potentially be in the way. And so, uh, Peter and his group take care of that and then we move forward with bond council, uh, getting involved with the referendum. All these pieces, um, are put together in order to then ultimately, if the bond referendum, uh, in order to do a fire department is, is voted on fifty, fifty percent plus one, then we go out to the marketplace and then all that is put together when we go out to, to hopefully get a, a great rating, uh, for a bond and then get great value on the bond and then have the bond council ultimately come to this body and, and approve us to borrow the money. So it's a, it's a multitude of, of, uh, series of steps that we need to take in, in order to get to the final day, um, if that's the direction we end up going.
And just make sure that, Peter, there was no, in your experience, because this initiative could be any initiative, correct? I'm sure you've done a lot of different, uh, projects. Any reason as a council that you can educate me on what to look out for or what might be a roadblock in this process? Otherwise, I mean, what value am I going to have?
Um, well, this is, uh, to be honest, this is definitely a unique situation. Um, I dealt with plenty of counties that are absorbing city fire departments and I've run scenarios based on that, um, act, that, uh, action happening. Um, I've only, I've dealt with one other city, uh, it's Coconut Creek down in South Florida where they're actually, um, starting up their own fire department and, um, as far as roadbo- blocks go, I would say if there is a s- a significant financial, um, there's a significant funding issue that's already present in the city's general fund based on your current operating millage, it will make everything more difficult when it comes to establishing your own fire department. So that's, that's kind of why that piece is there, to look at the baseline forecast of your city's general fund, ensure that your operating millage is sufficient to, to, to cover the ongoing, um, departmental operating costs and capital costs. And, um, um, I would say that would be the biggest, uh, challenge if, uh, that would, that would, uh, present itself to the city. If you guys are having issues funding your current level of ser- service and your current services, it's going to make it that much harder to bring in a new service and, uh, and, and, and fund it responsibly.
Deputy Mayor Francis?
Thank you, Mayor. Peter, thanks for being with us. So I'm, I'm guessing you're going to bring back options as far as, um, where our reserves are probably three times more than they, they need to be for us. Uh, we were just talking about that and, and part of the study says that if we switched over from the county to the city, that we, we would probably save one point six million in, in, uh, funds for the taxpayers. Um, I'm guessing that you'll bring back those options and say whether we should sell fund portion of it or, or maybe we should be putting money away now towards the fire services and then lend, lend ourselves the money when it comes to creating the infrastructure, which is the funds that we're going to have to put upfront. Um, and then after we start up the fire services, the savings we're getting of that one point six, we would be paying back to ourselves to recoup the money we lent to create the infrastructure. So that's going to be in, all in your proposal, correct?
Yes, um, so, so we'll be looking at whether or not the city does have the capacity to set aside certain funds outside of your required minimum reserve balance, because I'm, I'm sure the city has a policy that you have to keep a certain amount of money in the bank for working capital, uh, emergency, um, natural disasters, unforeseen circumstances-
Yeah, that was twenty percent.
-considering you are a coastal city. So, um, you want to have a good fund balance that you don't touch and use for something like this, but if there is the capacity to set aside funds starting next fiscal year, maybe, um, with the intention of, um, initiating this, uh, establishment of the fire department and, and, and putting the money out, um, in maybe a couple of years, then, you know, we can layer, we can tell you if you do have that capacity to set aside funds. Um, we can tell you if, um-
Would you give us, would you give it to us in options whether we can either fund it and this would happen or we could borrow it and this would happen? Is that kind of what you're going to do for us?
Exactly. Yeah, it, it all boils down to an annual impact, um, and an annual cash outflow. Um, so we, uh, we have the ability to estimate what the annual debt payments would be based on a number of scenarios. Say if you were to borrow ten million, if you were to borrow fifteen million. Um, I, I'm, I saw the presentation. I think the startup costs were around fifteen million. That was outside of the annual operational costs. Um, so say you were able to set aside five million to bring it down to ten million, what's the impact? How, how, how much does it lower your annual debt payment? Um, all of it within the context of your, your, your financial forecast for your general fund and, and what does that mean to taxpayers, um, uh, when you do add in, if you have to increase your operating millage to cover that annual payment?
Thank you.
I just need some clarification. One of our council members said the fire assessment fee will save money versus the millage rate. How does that affect us?
Fire assessment fee will save money and-
So he said-
opposed to the millage rate. I, I can't say that's, uh, true or not at this point. Um, it's, it's too early to tell. Uh, a fire assessment is going to mean more money to certain taxpayers in the city than a millage rate would. Um, and an example of that is low value properties. If there, there was a fixed fire assessment fee, say two hundred dollars a home, and the property had zero taxable value, so they don't even pay property taxes typically, they're going to see an increase of two hundred dollars because whereas they wouldn't, um, normally pay property taxes, now they're going to pay a fire assessment fee. Um, they're already currently, there's a, you know, I, I have to be honest, I haven't done a lot of, um, research yet into Brevard County's fire assessment structure, because there's a number of different ways to assess, um, to charge fire assessments. Um, there's all different variations of methodologies and, um, there's variable ways and there's flat ways. Um, so it, it really, it's like, it's too early to tell and, and say if a property would have savings in one situation rather than another at this point.
Okay, the other one was, in the other report, they said we can save one point six million a year. That's not the, that's not the city, that's the residents spread out. So how would the city recoup? If we have to actually put one point six million or any ever number that is out of our pocket, that's city money. The others are individual, uh, residents or buildings that's actually paying that one point six million. So, um, how do you recoup that money? Because that's what we're talking about.
Um, so you're saying, so right, right now, fire services aren't funded by the operating millage. They're funded by an MSTU and an MSBU in which county collects money out of city, um, residences' pockets in order to provide them fire services. The city will have to fund certain costs upfront before the fire department even exists and you'll have to pay out money out of the city reserves before you can start collecting assessment fees. The only way you can fund that is if you use your reserves, um, spend down your reserves or you increase revenues annually and use that money and pledge it towards funding those costs. So if you use your reserves and you do want to pay yourself back, you'll have to either, um, increase the millage rate and, and pay yourself back that way, or there's really not a whole lot of options to pay yourself back. Um, when the fire department comes online and you can charge fire assessment fees, you can't over-collect then, uh, oh, you can't collect over what the fire department costs at that time to pay yourself back for prior year's costs, if that makes sense. I'm sorry, it's getting a little, uh-
Yeah.
-complex, but you can add, in year one of operation, the fire department is online and it costs five million dollars a year to provide fire service to the residents in the city. You can only collect the cost of fire service in that year from fire assessments, five million a year.
Very good. And the last question is currently we're covered by three different fire departments, one mostly and another one, a, a good percent, and the third one just kind of a, uh, covers some, some of the area of the city. Are you, you're going to do analysis on one or two stations? I mean, there's a lot different in cost if we have multi-stations or a lot less coverage if we just do one station. So are you going to give us all the possible scenarios or?
I'll have to, when it comes to, to operational scenarios, I'm going to have to rely completely on the study that was already performed. Um, and, um, maybe under scenario one, it's the low cost option where you only have one station. If that affects the lo- the level of service to a certain extent, like maybe it's the worst level of service, uh, I, I can't really speak to that, um, as far as the level of service and the operations of the fire department. I'll have to rely on the study.
Yeah. I'm just guessing that one station would be less server, less than two. I'm just thinking that. Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, back to the financial question that I think I heard a while ago. It seems to me that the way that we pay now, which is just, uh, an annual charge, three hundred or so, depending on, uh, the size of the house, is it forces everybody in my mind to pay their fair share of what that fire service costs. If you add it to ad valorem, those who have a smaller house or those who have a less expensive house or even have been in the plan for a long time are not going to be paying, in my mind, their fair share. Uh, they're going to be forcing it onto people with high-end houses or that. And I kind of like the system that we currently have, which forces everybody to pay for the service that they're receiving, because it really, you know, it, a lot of the money is spent just getting the asset on, on there. If your house is an extra two hundred square feet or happens to be subject to the, uh, home set exemption, it doesn't change the service that you're getting to your house.
And, and the current fire, the current system is a dual system. There is a fire assessment and there is an MSTU. The MSTU is based on value, fire assessment based on use.
Good point. Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you again. Um, so just piggybacking on the fire service fee portion that the, um, and I'm going to state this just, and I know, know the answer to it, but I'm just going to state to it to make sure where everyone's clear, that the fire assessment fee would be charged, uh, well, let's put this way, ad valorem taxes, uh, there are people that have exemptions to pay ad valorem taxes, um, disabilities, so forth and so on. They currently pay a fire service fee. They will continue to pay a fire service fee if we choose to go that route, which would sounds like we would do that. Um, if we strictly went on a, a, a millage rate, I think it would, it would, we really would put the burden- put the burden on a lot of other people, and then, and then those, as Mr. Bentley said, would not be paying their fair share. So I would agree that we would continue to do the fire service fee. I believe, and as I've stated all along, that that the 1.6 million dollars that we are paying collectively as citizens throughout the city would then significantly, that fire service fee would drop proportionately to whatever we would actually need to collect. So my question for you, sir, is you're going to give us estimates, and how close do you have to be? And where do we, when we look at the fire assessment fee? So we say, say, like, my fire assessment fee is like around $400. If you come in and say, well, Mr. Dittmore, yours is going to be $300 this year based upon if the city does it themselves, but say really it wasn't enough, it needs to be 325, where do we, when do we tweak this? And are we allowed to go, hey, look, this is what we think it's going to be, and then adjust it later? Because we're liable to have either an overage or shortage, one way or the other. So I know you want to get us close to what it's going to be, and my question, I guess, for the city manager and attorney, are we going to be stuck to whatever we we actually bring in? And so how much leeway are you going to be able to give us for those projections?
Let's, let's, let's take a, let's take a, a step back a little bit there. Again, we, you know, Peter's not going to be able to give an exact fire assessment because it's going to be several years before we're able to implement it, and we can't implement it until we have the fire department and the assessment is, is, you know, there's, there's some steps.
I understand that, I understand that. My question is, my question is, when we decide to start collecting it, is it going to be, it's going to be based on projections, I would assume, at that point? So my question is, is, are we going to have to be stuck at that particular number? Or are we going to be able to go up over?
Annually.
Annually?
Annually.
So annually, so well, so what I mean is, I don't want to see us to fall short, but then again, we don't want to have too much, so would it be prudent for us to use the current number that the county's using and then back away from that? I mean, I'm just looking, what are we going to be stuck with?
We would annually, you know, annually evaluate when we, you know, when we reached out to Peter and his team, they were just at the point where everybody, all the counties in Florida were issuing their values, and so they were scrambling to put all those new analyses together.
I don't need an exact number right now, I'm just, I'm just, I think, how we're going to do this, like, later, eventually.
And that's, that's several, several steps into the future, and I think, you know, this is the, this is how we get this process started.
I'm not asking for a number, I'm asking how the process works.
Annually, annually, you evaluate your fire assessment fee. You can build in, like the county has, they've built in a 3%.
I understand that, I understand that. I'm talking about for year one. How do you, how are we going to come up with year one?
The, the, the study we'll put together, when we are, when we are at the point of being able to implement it, he'll be able to use value, real value dollars when we're ready.
So another question is, is can the fire service fee, can fire service fees pay the debt service starting in, say, year four? If we start, if we have, once we have the fire department in place?
So Peter, the question is, let's say we have a, a $1 million per year debt payment for the fire department. Year three, we're operating, fully operating the fire department, we have a fire assessment fee. The question is, can the fire assessment fee cover capital debt? Or does it?
That was already incurred.
If it's already incurred, yeah. Or does it, is it only operational services of the fire department?
No, and, and to my, to my knowledge, yes, because that is a cost that is necessary in order for the city to provide fire service to the residents. So beginning in that year, you've already been paying debt for three years, I guess in this scenario, on the, to fund the startup costs, to buy the land, to build the facilities, to buy the equipment, et cetera. But in the first year of the fire assessment program, it's the first year that the fire department is operational, that debt payment, that cost to provide that upfront capital in that first year, that would be included in the cost basis for the fire assessment. So say it's $5 million to pay all the firefighters, to buy all the operating supplies, to et cetera, the fire department budget in that year, $5 million, and there's a million dollars for the debt that was incurred to, to acquire all the capital, that first year, you can collect $6 million in fire assessment fees.
Gotcha. I think that was a question, correct? Okay. Thank you.
And, and going back to just, I think, what it would look like from a timeline perspective in year one, when, when you are about to become operational, say, everything lines up perfectly and the fire department will come online October 1st in that fiscal year, you would engage with us to actually perform a fire assessment study in that, the January before that. So in that fiscal year, say, October 1st, 2025 is when the fire department would come online, you would engage with us to perform that fire assessment study in January 2025, and by that time, we'll have an assessment rule built for you of all the fire assessments for each property in the city that would be submitted to the tax collector and go on that November's tax bill.
So you're saying, and I remember you said earlier, we couldn't, we couldn't like, pay ourselves back for the investment for the first three years, but, but the, so we would be on our own for the debt service, for, say, it took 36 months for startup, and say, year four was, was the first year we went operational. So those first three years would be, the debt service would be on the general fund, where we were not really, because a lot of times, we'll loan ourselves money, so, where we internally loan ourselves money, so there's, is there a process to do that or not do that? Will we be able to loan ourselves money in this particular, and I don't think we can because it's general fund to general fund, but I'm just asking, because sometimes we do for, you know, we loan money to our water or sewer, I mean, for our, our water projects that we have, we've, we've done that in the past, where we've done that for, for drainage and things. Is it possible to do that?
I don't believe so. I'm just going to say that to be, to err on the side of caution. I think the general fund would be on the hook for the first, say, it took 36 months, that means three years, three debt payments without the fire assessment program in place, it would be on operating millage and general fund reserves to fund those first three years of debt service in order to get the, the department up and running. And then year, year three, or year four, rather, whichever year the fire department is operational, would be the first year you could start collecting fire assessments from residents to fund the fire department and move forward with that, that funding in place.
So you seem a little bit unsure about that, so may I ask you, how would we know that answer for sure?
Um, I.
Is that a legal question, or is that a?
So I just know that you can't, you can't include some kind of payback in the, the cost basis for the fire assessment. So it can't, it can't be like you add in an extra 500,000 and, and include that in the assessment program so that you can pay yourself back for those prior years. I know, I don't, that's not an accessible cost, and I wouldn't advise that.
Well, I mean, if, say we were to self-fund this, we were self-funding it like we do other projects, say we had $30 million in excess, and we wanted to self-fund it, we didn't want to use, we wanted to do our own form of debt service where we borrow from ourselves. You're saying there's no procedure to do that? Because you, it seems like we almost have to go to bond to borrow the money and then pay it back, rather than if we had the money where we could borrow from ourselves. That's why I'm trying to figure that line there, because it's almost like it's forcing us to go to bond rather than use the internal money that we have. Well, I mean, why pay a debt, why pay the debt service to, to a bond when we could pay it back to ourselves? I mean, I, you're just saying there's no provision for that?
I'm not sure. I haven't, I haven't experienced it before, actually, where a city had the means.
Do you know anything about that, Mr. Kerr?
Yeah, I mean, the simple answer is because the law allows you to pay debt service, but not to pay, to pay into the general fund, or to pay into your reserves. I mean, yeah.
Basically, we're.
I understand your point, that, you know, it's the same either way, either you're paying yourself back or you're paying the bondholders back, it's not the precise term, but you know what I mean. But the law allows debt service and it doesn't allow transfers into.
Are we, are we allowed to borrow against our reserves? So I mean, I'm saying the money that we have invested, are we allowed to borrow that money?
Borrow through whom?
So when we have investments, I'll give you, for instance, use that, I know that when you, if you have pension savings money, you can borrow against that money and make the payments back, and that would be a debt that has to be paid back. Could we create that scenario?
Borrowing from a, or borrowing against a pension?
No, 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 no. We have money that's actually in investment accounts. Is there, is there, is there a way to borrow that money to pay and then pay it back? Because you're allowed, you're allowed to do that on pension systems, like, if I want to borrow money on my pension system, not here in West Bumble, we can't, but you're allowed to borrow money on these, those types of scenarios. What I'm getting at is, is if it would create a debt service and paying ourselves back, it's creative financing is what it is.
It would create a requirement for a referendum, because anytime you borrow against the full faith and credit of the city, you have to go to referendum on that.
Okay, that's fine. Well.
So you're going to, so you're going to be going to?
We've done that before. We've, we've actually, without going to referendum, we've borrowed money against ourselves, and we've loaned it.
Well.
We have.
I'm not sure what you mean, but, but water is coming out of an enterprise fund, that's not the full faith and credit, that's.
No. No, we've, we've, we've borrowed money against.
Borrowed a couple hundred thousand to buy the menzimuk from our, internally from ourselves.
Yes.
That's what they're talking about.
Yes, and we paid, and we paid that back.
But what do you mean, you borrowed it?
They, we borrowed it.
Are you talking about, like, where did the money come from?
It came, it was transferred from the general fund into this, to the other fund, okay? One to the other. And I understand that's a difference, that's a difference.
That's accounting, right?
Right, that's accounting. What I'm getting at is, is that if we have money that's invested in those investment funds, if those funds would allow us to borrow against them while they're there, I know that sounds a little bit weird, but it does happen, so is that, is that feasible or not?
I, I think, I think we're, we're getting way off track and way into the weeds. The one, the reason I'll, the reason I'll just kind of pull it back a little bit is, when you internally borrow from yourself, you set your own terms, and when you get a bond counsel involved, that's why the fire assessment fee is able to pay a bond debt because it went through bond counsel, rather than us artificially setting an internal rate against ourselves and possibly offsetting tax.
Are you familiar with what I'm talking about, number one, as far as how to borrow this, borrowing against money that's invested? Or you understand where, have you ever heard of what I'm talking about?
Personally, not, never on a municipal level.
Okay. I mean, is it, is it available? Is anybody even bothered to look at that? Because if it is, how much money do we have invested in the market? How much money do we actually have invested right now?
50-plus million.
We have 50 million invested right now.
Through, through all of our accounts, water, sewer, storm, ARPA, cash.
And, and then, and the, and the general fund, in that fund that we talked about, is all that 12 million is actually?
20 million. We have 20 million in the general fund reserve being invested right now. 11 unrestricted, the rest restricted.
And there's no way to borrow against that and then pay that back?
I.
I'm asking, I don't know, I'm asking. If I, if I had a million dollars in a pension savings account, I can borrow and get a loan from that and then pay the pension system back, pay it back.
But you, how, what would you be loaning it against?
Loaning against the money, it would be a loan against the money that I have. It's my money.
What I'm getting at is, what are you securing the debt with?
The, the money that I actually have.
But it's the city's money.
Well, it is, with the city who's borrowing.
But what are we, what are we borrowing? What are, what collateral are we using to borrow against ourselves?
The money that's there, that's invested, the 20 million.
And if we lose that money.
Move on on this topic.
Just sounds like we're going to be better off going out the bond.
Yeah, I think.
What I'm trying to do is, well, what I'm trying to.
Trying to uncomplicate it.
What I'm trying to do is, is trying to figure a way that we, the first three years, to figure a way that we could cover the three years without having.
And that's what StanTech is going to help put together with some options.
Why, I understand that, and it, but all those, but those, both those options require a millage, it's going to require a millage or using our, our reserve funds. I was, I was simply asking, is there a way for us internally to borrow against the money that we have invested to cover those three years and then pay that back? Because it's a debt service.
But I think they, the, the point is, if we're going to pay that back with fire assessment fee in the future.
Can't.
It needs to be.
We can't.
It can if it is debt.
No, we can't do it for the first three years.
If it's debt.
No, no, we can't.
If it's bonded debt for capital.
We can't.
Infrastructure, it can be paid back with the fire assessment.
Sir, correct, correct if I'm wrong, the first three years, we're on, we're on the hook for this, ourselves, correct?
Yeah, well, I'm saying, what I was saying was, in, in year three or year four, whenever the, the fire department is operational.
You're breaking up.
Peter, you're coming in and out here a little bit.
Oh, sorry, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can you hear me better? I'm saying that you can't refund yourself for the first three years of bond payments. Those first three years of bond payments, there's going to be no fire assessment program in place to fund them, they're going to have to be funded with general revenues. Year four, the bond can then be funded forward with fire assessment fees.
First three, we're going to be on our own, regardless of how we get the money, whether we borrow it internal or borrow it through a bonding agency.
Right, and I just.
For the bonding, the.
And I just, I'm just trying to make a point, just trying to be creative where we're not paying, where somehow or another, we're trying, we're, we're deferring that out, where we're paying it back to ourselves. There's got to be a, a, a simpler way. We have a lot of money, a lot of money, and it, and I'm trying to avoid pushing back on the taxpayers for the first three years, the best, the best way we can. So I'm just looking for options here to what we can do.
All right, Ms. Adams, followed by Mr. McDowell.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, this has been some great information. I appreciate you taking the time to answer our questions. In terms of the recommendation from staff and looking at the feasibility study that you're going to be giving us, Mr. Roddy, I'm expecting that the representative will be coming back either in person or virtually with us when the report is finished to present and explain and answer any of our additional questions?
Yes, he will.
Okay, so with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement incorporating professional services for task order one with StanTech for the fire department financial feasibility study, not to exceed the amount of $30,400.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell?
Second that with question.
Yeah, you're up.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. At the risk of revisiting that whole issue about financing, can we also please, if for some reason we are not able to recover, recoup, can we have a material of what that is going to be? Because we have an ROI currently of 1.6 million, and if we, if we have to, that startup cost, we have to absorb that, what does that do to that? That erodes that 1.6, how severely? Is it material? Do you, does that make sense? But I don't want to get into this.
I think that's what the study is going to help us.
Okay.
Put, put in black and white.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor, seeing what's saying, aye, aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one, what Bentley voting, nay. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate the opportunity and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Our next action agenda is Parks Master Plan Consulting Services.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council.
Good evening.
This is a project we're excited to continue moving forward. We had previously brought the scope of services, a draft scope of services to both Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as well as the City Council, to help us refine the scope for this project. We took the feedback received from both Parks and Recreation Board and City Council, wrapped that into a, an RFP that we had put out to bid. It was out at the end of April, wrapped up at the end of May. We put together a small evaluation committee comprised of the city manager, myself, and since we are without a recreation director at the moment, we were fortunate enough to have the assistance of a former Parks and Recreation Director for Brevard County, Jack Masson, on the committee. So we met, we all independently scored the responses from several reputable and qualified firms. We were fortunate that we had three submittals for this RFP. So the, the way that it ended up. So, the, uh, the way that it ended up, uh, GAI Consultants, uh, was the, the high score on that. Uh, the, uh, sort of the summary of the project is that, uh, you know, we'll do a, conduct an analysis, an evaluation, uh, an inventory of, uh, current parks and recreation assets, facilities, uh, amenities. Do public outreach through, uh, surveys, workshops, uh, will meet with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, city council, city staff, along with the consultant, uh, to determine kind of where gaps exist between what we have and what, uh, is needed and desired by the community, the growing community going forward. And then putting together a plan for how we can implement those improvements at city parks and facilities, uh, going forward. So, helping to find a roadmap for implementing those things, uh, obviously a, a big, uh, portion of this is the outreach and trying to get as much broad involvement across the city as possible. Uh, so that's a big element of this. Uh, NGI, uh, has a number of ideas for, uh, obtaining that information and, and feedback from, from residents. So, what we would recommend is, uh, authorization from city council to, um, allow the city manager to enter an agreement with GAI Consultants for, uh, the Parks Master Plan Consulting Services and the not to exceed amount of a hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred, uh, included in the current budget years, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so that comes in below. Uh, so, uh, we would just recommend authorization to move forward.
All right. What's the wish of the council? Deputy Mayor Francis?
Make a motion. We authorize the city manager to enter in an agreement with GAI Consultants LLC for Parks Master Plan Consulting Services in the not to exceed amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second with a question.
You're up.
Mr. Rhodey, looking through the, the, the ratings for the three companies, I know you and I had discussed, but I had thought it was important for council to hear as well. Uh, can you explain the difference? There was a three-point difference between our, your first recommendation versus the second. Can you elaborate on what kind of brought the GAI consultants a, a little bit further ahead?
Yeah, I can, I can only speak to my scoring, um, that, that I did as part of this. Um, first of all, uh, leaving the scoring meeting, uh, I would be comfortable with all three of these firms. Uh, I think all three of them, uh, put together a good proposal. Um, you know, we currently do, uh, some work right now with, uh, MHCP. Uh, Miller Leg has a really good reputation, but is a little bit more of a, uh, I, I view them a little bit more of a national firm, a little bit more of a, um, you know, a fear of, of a little bit of a plug and play. Um, but I thought they did put together a fantastic, um, proposal for us and would be happy to go with them. I scored GAI, uh, a, a little bit higher than, uh, Miller Leg myself. I like their proposal. Um, they seem to be more familiar with the community and so that, that just put them a few points. Uh, price was, you know, all three firms were within a couple thousand bucks, so I didn't really, myself personally didn't, didn't fluctuate on the pricing side of things. It was more the proposal, the plan and the, and the team they put together. And so that's what they scored a few extra points with me over, um, Miller Leg.
Thank you, sir.
As a quick follow-up, uh, we also work with GAI Consultants on, uh, some GIS work. And so we do have existing work that we do with GAI. And so, uh, as Mr. Rhodey had mentioned, we do have some work with MHCP collab as well as GAI. So we, we've worked with both, both of those firms in the past and currently.
Thank you.
Hi, Deputy Mayor.
What, what was the timeframe on this? I don't know if I saw it.
Uh, six to seven months is what you can expect for the timeline.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you would add to the scope of service if we had more funds? Or is this pretty much, um, looking at everything?
I think this is a pretty comprehensive look at what we're trying to accomplish, you know, as far as developing, you know, assess what we have, determine what the needs are, determine where the gaps are, figure out a plan for implementing those things. And so, you know, I think we have some good firms here that, that can help us accomplish that.
How do you differentiate between a group that comes into council? Let's say we get the, I don't know, horseback riding group wants a stable, I don't know, something like that. And of course, we're gonna get a lot of votes from, that's what they want versus bringing in a bunch of skaters like we did before to get the skate park. So, how do we really see what the community wants as opposed to, um, you know, when you have twenty-five people in there versus twenty-nine thousand residents?
Well, and that's the, that's part of the challenge is just getting people to participate in the process. And so, that public outreach, one thing that, uh, GAI, I think, did really well in their, um, uh, proposal was show some of the technology and some of the, you know, dedicated websites and, and feedback mechanisms that they've put together in the past for other projects. Um, and so a, a big focus will be trying to, to solicit that input at, you know, not just in-person meetings, but also outreach efforts through, you know, digital surveys, uh, as part of this process, but also looking at potentially adding some surveys to, you know, when people participate in existing programs or activities, follow that up with a survey, you know, asking for feedback at that point too. So, maybe not just for, as part of this specific process, but maybe ongoing beyond that, continue to solicit feedback going forward so you can kind of evolve a little bit. But, um, you know, I think the, the biggest part of that is trying to get the community to participate in the process and advertising that and, and putting that out in a variety of ways. And then obviously, part of it is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and, and the city council input as part of the project.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor saying aye, aye, oppose, pushing carries seven zero. Thanks for putting that together, Tom. And our next action item?
Item, uh, I think the council, uh, really has been excited about, uh, that I wanted to bring forward here as we're looking to amend. I've, a little bit of, a little bit of humor. Uh, we are looking to amend the speed hump policy. Uh, you know, ironically, in the, the last year, we've had two community, uh, neighborhood groups reach out to the city council and ask, um, asked to have their speed humps removed, uh, which probably statistically hasn't happened in another community in, in, in our area in a long time. And, uh, the irony is we have a really good, uh, speed hump policy, how they go in, uh, procedures, uh, uh, neighborhood involvement and then, uh, police, uh, review and then, uh, ultimately, uh, recommendation and then a determination by the city council. Uh, but I think the irony is we don't have a process to remove them. And so, just taking a look at the policy and kind of reversing it. Um, uh, unfortunately, in the, originally in the memo, the new additions were in red. Uh, I was informed, uh, this morning when I inquired, uh, the red did not make it because red does not meet the, uh, ADA certification. So, the amendments are underlined and there are only a few of them. And, uh, they are located in the current policy, um, underlined basically for the removal of, uh, is, is almost all of the language that's put into place of the policy. We do have a petition, um, kind of in waiting for this, which is why this is in front of the city council. We had, uh, the Melbourne Estates, uh, neighborhood, uh, has reached out. And I, I don't know if the person is present who's, who's submitted those, who wants to, to, to speak if, if they so desire. But, um, we do, we do have one present, but we really don't have a process for it. And so this policy would allow us to, uh, create the, you know, a policy and then a path forward for residents to then follow, to then get it, uh, ultimately in front of the council to get a yea or nay as far as the speed hump. So there's, again, basically just the insert, basically inserting the words "or" removal, uh, several times where it talks about how you install, how we get them to install. And then again, um, uh, talking about the speed and the reverse. So in order to qualify, you have to have a certain amount of speed, uh, being conducted in a neighborhood in order to have them removed. We would also want to know what the level of speed is in the neighborhood. We certainly don't want to cause more problems. Um, and so it's, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, again, probably not something that's gonna come up a ton in the, in the city of West Melbourne. We only have a handful of, uh, speed humps left in the city, but, uh, better to have a policy, uh, and a clear policy for people to follow rather than an arbitrary one, in my opinion.
Uh, Coach Teis, did you want to speak on this subject?
Hello, I'm John Teis. I live in, on Stevenson Drive. And we've observed for a long time that the speed humps on our street, uh, not only do not slow people down, but they actually don't hit the brakes. They just speed up for some reason. And so we put in, we went around to all the neighbors and got petitions to have them removed since they're already halfway removed with the work they're doing on the drainage. And so, um, we have other options also in petition, but, uh, that's the long and the short of it.
Are you proposing your street or both streets in your development?
We're just proposing our street.
Okay. For those don't, yeah, go ahead.
Kind of got tricked into it to begin with. The other street wanted it.
Yeah.
And they sucked us in. But I, I didn't realize that that's what we were signing. I thought we were signing to have it on Bosso and.
And did you, did you vote for or against this years ago?
I voted for it for Bosso.
Oh, okay.
That's why I said we kind of.
I was for, before I was against it. Okay.
I was for, for, I was against it. They were for it, really.
Yeah, all right. Very good. Thank you, Coach. Uh, Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rhodey, looking at the policy, I just want to be clear. It's seventy-five percent of the homes, so each home, just like when we put them in, it would be the same for removal, that a home gets one vote and you would need seventy-five percent of the homes, correct?
Correct. You essentially are asking for each vote to give it a thumb, each home to give it a vote of thumbs up or thumbs down.
Okay.
So that we don't get into hu- husband wants it, wife doesn't, and, you know, be the arbitrator. That we just do per home. Each vote, each, each home has one vote.
And thinking longer term, if we move forward with these proposed changes from staff, is there a timeframe, let's say for example, you know, they move forward with the process, they get the required seventy-five percent. It comes, it's good to go, the speed humps are removed. And then, you know, we see speeding go up in that area a month or two later. Do we have a timeframe in, I guess in relation to three months later, couldn't they do the same process to get them reinstalled? And is that a problem from the perspective of the city? Or is it okay as long as they follow the process each time?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, we, we don't have like a, a cooling off period. If, if they, if we take them out and a couple of months later, people really don't like that we took them out, um, and they do the petition process, it could, it could go back in once it follows the process. But, you know, I think, I think that's where the seventy-five percent of the households, I mean, you gotta kind of live with what you want. If you, if you want them removed and we evaluate it and we, we feel that's the right thing and this council votes to do it, then, you know, probably not gonna have too much luck coming back a couple of months later asking for the opposite.
Right, makes sense. I just wanted to make sure our residents had options.
Yeah, I, I, I also want to be very clear, uh, this policy for putting them in and for removing them, um, comes to the council for a vote. The, the council has the authority to add or remove. We just follow a process to get to the council to vote. You know, there's no pre-determined decision. It's a council, it's a vote of the council.
I think in terms of the staff removal or staff comments going through and adding removal to make it clear, I think it follows a clear policy to put them in. I think it makes sense for the same policy to apply to take them out. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff recommendation is, as, as far as changes with the speed hump installation and therefore remover, removal policy.
Second rose, uh, Ms. Young?
I just have a question. Um, it's been come up bef- before with the language, what we have for the resident, resident who resides in the home. And we thought the resident was more important because they're the ones that actually live there. So we were fine with that. But now we are having more and more rental properties, more and more people who, the landlord is wherever, sometimes it's, um, it's an Airbnb. In, rather, since we're going to change it for the entire city, do we want to be clear on exactly what we mean by that? That it is the person who actually resides and not necessarily the owner? Or do we, are we going to, I mean, do we want to make it clear so that we don't get into trouble before where the owner comes back and says, I own it and you had no right to change it?
Correct. The, the policy as it's stated now is, is whoever is residing there. So you, you would be voting as a renter if you resided there.
Or for the Airbnb, you're saying the flavor of the day, the week?
That is correct. That is what the policy says.
Wow.
You have to get seventy-five percent of the homes in that area. And I'm thinking how many of our neighborhoods have seventy-five percent of their homes as, you know, an Airbnb?
But the owner owns a home and they should have the rights to do that, I would think.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, can we, would you like to make amendment to, to our motion that makes it more clear?
Well, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the resident that actually lives there, but, I'm sorry.
I was seeing what amendment she was, was thinking in terms of language. Because if we make it homeowners, then renters don't get a vote, period.
Can we specify that it would not be a short-term rental? Like some people just rent, I mean, our city minimum is seven-day rental, so we wouldn't want.
Very, very few Airbnb rentals. I, I don't know that that would be.
Well, we do right now, but we're changing it for the whole city and, I know we can change it again.
So do we, I think it makes sense to change it to the homeowner rather than.
I'll accept that.
The renter. I, I'm getting council feedback. I think it's important.
So we know we're feeding back.
All right. We'll make the motion to change resident to homeowner.
I'll, I'll accept that amendment to your own motion, yes. Uh, Deputy Mayor Francis? I'm sorry, are you finished, Ms. Young?
Yes, I'm finished.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, how long is the review by PD on the ten mile per hour peak hours? How many, how long is that process? Uh, it would be up to the, you know, up to the chief and their determination. I don't think the policy calls for a specific. But it's specific as far as sixty percent of motorists during peak hours, what peak hours and how long are we doing it for? They would be evaluating that, you know, something by a school would, would be around school time. Something by a factory or a business that lets out at a certain time would be, I, I think it's their discretion to, uh, help evaluate when that peak time is to basically, you know, we've had issues with churches in the past. It might be, that might be the peak time, so those. I just didn't know if it was one day, five days.
And if I could offer some insight, I think right now, most of our speed studies, we generally do for about two weeks. So I think it'd be reasonable to be out there and you're usually gonna catch each direction for a week. That's typically what we would do. That gives us a real good picture of, you know, if you have a holiday in there or something, uh, some averages. And then we would look at, you know, the peak travel times and, uh, you know, that's pretty much established by the traffic patterns. And our data would show us that.
If that's the standard, I'm fine with that. That's great. Thank you.
The only trouble with this road, I believe, is if you've been down it, it's like a war zone where they're putting sidewalks and sewers and water pipes. So, it's hard to even go, uh, any miles an hour down there a lot of times with all the trucks and traffic and such. It's, should be noted also that the end of this road, Stevenson, on the south side of the road is a dead end block. And they have a speed bump on that part, which was, uh, truly a waste of money and resources. But I don't know if it's better to wait for your true analysis after the, uh, project is finished. But we need to take those speed bumps out if this passes before they repave the road because they will be repaving or putting some micro seal or something on there.
Seems like it would save us money if we didn't have to put them back in, if we're ripping them out anyhow.
I don't think they ripped the whole thing. Like Coach said, it's only part of it's ripped out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Dittmar?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to caution about the ownership, um, the owner versus the renter, which, trust me, I get that. But I just want to caution about the owners. Uh, we have a, I know we have an issue in our community. I know there's an issue in Westbrook with, uh, corporate rentals. Um, they tend to vote no on everything when it comes to voting in the community. So it becomes somewhat problematic when you're trying to get something done. Um, they, my experience, they're more or less obstructed on everything. I don't know if there's a workaround in that. But when you have corporate rentals involved, that's gonna affect your percentage and it could affect your ability to get things done. So, if, especially if you're trying to make a change, um, they generally just vote, they vote. So if, especially if you're trying to make a change, um, they generally just vote, they vote no on everything. So that's why.
Uh, Ms. Adams again?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rhodey, this policy as written right now does not specify if we, if we're changing it to homeowners. If someone owns a home but lives in a different area and is, is renting that home out, but they're hoping to get 75% of that petition signed. Do we give them a way or an opportunity to, you know, send the petition via mail to get it back? Does it only have to be signed on the form?
So, so again, not, those are not our challenges, right? So the beauty of the policy is that the group of homeowners that want this, you know, the, the county assessor's website has all of the property owners and their tax bill address, which is their official address. And they'll have to reach out to those people. If you change it to homeowners, then they would have to reach out and get, you know, they'd have to explain what's going on and, and get their signatures somehow and then present those to us. So we, we would stay out of the whole logistics of, you know, how you track down a, a couple living in Wyoming, you know, who own a home here and have renters.
And if your neighborhood has 75% that are owned by a corporate and they're renting them out, that would work the same way?
Correct. But keep in mind that, you know, referencing the earlier comment, this, this comes to a vote of the city council. So if the city council felt that the vast majority of residents wanted something, but they were three signature short or, or 10 signature short, that's, that's the discretion that the city council has. Just as the city council has discretion, if they look at the facts and go, you know what? Speed humps might not be popular, but we think it's slowing traffic down and we want to keep them. So I mean, that's the beauty of it ultimately coming back. We present facts and it comes back. And in order to avoid getting all those facts by just one person being upset about the speed humps, that's where the 75% comes in to, to be able to trigger to know that we're not going to keep flip-flopping back and forth, that five people want them and then five people don't want them. So that, so I think the policy is in good shape. It just didn't address any, it just didn't address how you get rid of them.
Apologies for the questions. I just want to make sure that I'm clear if, if this moves in, into policy. So residents could come forward with a petition that does not have the 75% and council still could make that determination whether to waive that requirement or not?
Correct. So if they don't hit that threshold, then it doesn't trigger the police, police traffic enforcement, right? So that's, the onus is on the group of residents to, to bring it forward.
Okay. I don't think I've seen that since I've been on council in that way. So that's why I was curious.
I, I, I'm embarrassed to say, I think there's three roads left with speed humps. But I think that's what we're down to. I think Stevenson, Bosso, and there's one other that's coming to mind. We took the ones out. Parallel to Florida, those are no longer theirs, but I, okay, off of Sheridan.
Yeah, that's county. That's county.
Oh, so we're, you know, this, this isn't a, you know, this isn't a big global item for West Melbourne.
Understood. Thank you.
And, and just to make it clear, this is not an ordinance. This is just a policy. So it's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say ordinance? I thought I said policy.
Just, it's one and done, as the deputy said. Okay. All right. Motion in the second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carried, seven, zero. Petition, petition. All right. Our last action item tonight is six-month review of the city attorney's performance.
Evening, Mayor and city council members. We are here for our city attorney, Mr. John Carey. Uh, he was appointed as our city of West Melbourne City Attorney on November 29th of 2022. And according to the agreement, you will be evaluating him at his six-month and one-year marks. So we are past that six-month, uh, six-month mark. Um, I did send out evaluations and received an evaluation from each one of our council members, compiled that into a summary document, which was attached to the staff report. His overall score was a 3.325 out of five. And the recommendation is to review the summary results of the city attorney's six-month performance evaluation and by motion, accept the summary results.
All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the evaluation? The only, uh, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Francis?
I was just going to make a motion to accept the results you have.
Second rose. The only thing we could, I didn't see on here is the individual councils' numbers that they used.
Just provided the averages.
Pardon?
Provided the averages, yes.
Yeah. Uh, because if, if a council member had a one and another one had five, you kind of want to know.
In general, there were threes across the board with a little variation of that.
In general? Well, any below threes?
I think the only one was yours with a 2.75 with the one comment that you had.
One comment. And I couldn't do that because the machine wouldn't let me.
I took note of it and put it in your, the calculation.
Yes.
And may comment to it in your, your comments.
Okay, yeah. My comments, I guess as you, you saw them that when you have a group of eight or 10 different, uh, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and then we get one number for them, I just thought it'd be better to, uh, rate each one of them if those questions are appropriate.
Last time when I did the city managers, I had a bunch of questions and there were several in there that you were not able to, or some members were not able to evaluate on. So this time I just did the categories and put questions under there and, and however you wanted to rate them in that category, those questions prompted thoughts and ideas.
And for, just for the record, the 2.75 was not the overall, my score?
No, sir.
Okay.
Nope, just for that one question.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion in the second on the floor. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, accept this. Aye, oppose? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Any comments from you?
Thank you all for the time you put into that. It's been a great six months and I look forward to the next six months.
All right.
Well, the next two and a half years since that's my contract period.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for putting all that together. All right. Next, we have city council reports. Councilmember Young, you're up first.
Oh, thank you. I get to go first this time. Um, I wanted to say thank you to Officer Cantis, um, for the great job that he did, um, right there at Henry and Hollywood. That was wonderful. And I didn't know that it was going to make national news until I saw it come across my newsfeed this morning, but I thought that was pretty interesting. So certainly thank you to him. And also thank you for the two officers. I think Wills was the other one. Wills and Cantis for our Space Coast League of Cities dinner. So thank you to them as well as for that. We had a, a meeting on the 12th of this month for the Ellis Road, um, partner, um, update. We had it at the airport and, um, Councilman, um, Francis and McDowell and Adams and myself attended, along with our, um, our city manager, who seems to be invisible at the moment. I think he disappeared for a second. And that was a very good meeting and was an update, uh, goes right along in, in line with the updates that I bring to you each month. The infogrant is the next step. And then once the infogrant has made the application, the next step after that is we need to support that application. So we'll need to lobby our local politicians, our, the Debbie Mayfield and, um, Brandy Fine and, uh, US Senator Posey. And on the other side, the, our Senator Ruby O, I believe we need, who's our district? Whoever it is, we need to lobby them and get them to support our infogrant application, because the competition is pretty stiff for this. And if we are awarded the infogrant, it is a match, so at least it can be 50 to 60% match. So we're going to have to come up with some money for that anyway, um, if we do that. Vision Zero, we had our Vision Zero meeting. If you look at your station here, you'll see these little pamphlets. And these are the ones I believe the police department actually uses, although I, I did inquire and I see that it is the 2021. So it's not quite up to date. Must be why we have them. And when the officer stops you, they actually have this little reference book to turn to. So they can see exactly which statute it is that they believe you violated. So they have very easy access to it. If it's a moving violation, a non-moving violation, if you have to appear in court. There's just other very, um, kind of interesting information that's in this little book that I thought you all might like to have that. So I was very busy since our last meeting. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, on that TPO meeting, uh, there was a significant shortfall. And that's why there's that need to go out and lobby for getting that grant.
50 million.
That's what I wanted to hear out loud, 50 million, which is, uh, quite a large number. So anyway, um, thank you. The, I attended the Palm Bay Chamber luncheon on the 7th, the League of Cities on the 12th. As the councilwoman said, on the 12th, I also attended the TPO Ellis Road, uh, update. I had the honor to, uh, chair the ad hoc committee and, uh, with the community and business leaders for the prosperity initiative that was, uh, using a new, uh, methodology called the symbiotic culture lab, uh, initiative. So that's kind of bringing people together from community and business alike, uh, pulling them together, a different approach. And then also on Wednesday, the 14th, I attended the Economic Development Commission Board Meeting, which I usually see several of the other council members there, but, um, I didn't see you this time. And it was, uh, the highlight was the feather in our cap for the Starcom. They really played up the beauty of having us get the award for the training here at the Patrick Air Force Base for the air, um, air force. So, Space Force, sorry, Space Force. Um, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to just give a note of appreciation to our staff, because West Melbourne and Melbourne Village had hosted together the League of Cities meeting recently. And that was well-managed and well-done. So that was great. I did attend, uh, last week's planning and zoning meeting. It was one of, I think, uh, the more lively planning and zoning meetings that I've seen recently. So I think our residents did a really good job representing the kind of needs and desires of the city. So I just wanted to give them recognition for their work, uh, because all of them are volunteers and they show up and, and they do good work. Uh, recently I also attended the disadvantaged transportation board and, uh, Councilwoman Young actually chairs that board. It was a really good discussion with different entities across Brevard County that talk about transportation needs, not only of people with disabilities, but, uh, among our older population or people with medical needs. And they went through and they gave a pie chart that really broke down not only how, you know, how many dollars and cents, which it has seen an increase this year compared to previous years, like all of the other costs are going up. But they also broke down what each of the trips are being used for. Um, and their hope is that the majority is used for things like, uh, medical appointments and those kind of life-sustaining sort of needs. Uh, but it was just really educational. So if you've never been to that particular board, I highly encourage it. Uh, today I did attend the Form Six seminar that was offered by the Florida League of Cities. Uh, Form Six won't be kicking into effect until next year, but it is a little bit more extensive than the Form One that we are required to, uh, submit. Just, just a little. Uh, but this is your reminder, they did remind us multiple times on the webinar that your Form One is due by July 1st. So if you haven't submitted it, uh, this is your reminder to get it in. And then I just kind of made notes on, uh, two different things that I think would benefit from, uh, council outreach into our community. We had talked earlier about the Parks Master Plan and trying to get people involved. There are seven of us and then our amazing city staff and our police department and all of the people that represent our city. I really think, considering we have, you know, advanced knowledge, this is going to be coming out, this is important. If we start talking with residents in our community now, we're going to engage, hopefully, so much more of our population than if we wait until things become live. So I would just encourage you kind of start thinking about that outreach, even in your own neighborhood now. As well as for the letters that Councilwoman Young had mentioned in terms of getting the Ellis Road project moved along. Um, I had asked the question of how much time, when the project goes live and we want to apply, how much time do we have to get those letters in? And they couldn't give an exact time, but they said that window is very small. So we basically need everyone to be at the ready to go. So just a note on that. And I can confirm, uh, I don't know if it's because I was in the vehicle and really excited to learn things, but on two of the recent ride-alongs that I did with our police department, they pulled out these books. They're a little bit shorter. But they were referencing them when they were having a conversation with a resident and saying, well, this is a moving violation versus not. So I thought it was really interesting and they do use them. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Francis?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, did a lot of what everybody else did, uh, Palm Bay Chamber, the Ellis Road Stakeholders Meeting, which, um, you know, like Ms. Young said, you know, getting this matching funding from the feds will, you know, pretty much allow this, this operation on Ellis Road to be completed. So I think that's wonderful and, and we do need to reach out and, uh, get that federal money. Did the Space Coast League of Cities, that was a nice event, held by Promise and, and I met with staff today on the budget stuff. So, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dittmore?
Uh, no report. I'll just have questions for the city manager when we're ready.
Hold that thought. Uh, Councilmember Bentley?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just attended a few events, you know, such as the, you know, my duties on the Space Coast League of Cities. Uh, we did have the dinner that evening and thanks to the staff, because they're the ones that do the work for that. Palm Bay Chamber, I did submit my Form One, so, uh, make sure you get those in, guys, or talk about some serious fines. And then we did get one of the two grants that we put in for, for something on the order of 800K. I don't know what the actual number was. Does anybody?
Seven, five, something.
700 and some change. So that was for the subject to sewer conversion along Sheridan Avenue or Road. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll bet cleanup here. I attended a lot of the same meetings, Space Coast League of Cities that we hosted. It was a good event. Uh, Promise always does a nice job hosting that for us. And Melbourne Village is getting more and more active with that. So that was good. Uh, just reminding everybody, July 4th coming up, a lot of fireworks, which are legal now on July 4th. Yes, you heard it here. Uh, also, um, yes, it is. I think there's three days a year they're legal, right, Chief? Can you name the days, Chief? Yeah. And, uh, also, we don't have a meeting that week in celebration of the, uh, Independence Day. Also want to commend, uh, city staff. I know we had a interesting, uh, time with the hailstorm. So they received over 600 applications just for roofs. So, uh, tire places are doing pretty well with fixing flat tires and such. But, uh, now they're, they're working full speed on issuing those permits. And that's a heck of a lot of, uh, permits for, for roofs and they're still coming in strong. Employees this week are, um, working on insurance. And I spent a few minutes in their seminar today and they're answering a lot of good questions. And, um, as Mr. Bentley said, West Melbourne was granted one of the two grants. Uh, the other one was vetoed by the governor. And when Representative Fine called me and said, well, you got the good one, you got the larger one, but you didn't get the other one. And I said, kind of why? And he says, a lot of other cities are using lobbyists and they're getting in the, the ear of the, some people. So who knows if, if that's the answer or not? Nobody knows, but, uh, Melbourne got a lot, Palm Bay got a lot, and we got 50% of ours. But we'll take it and, uh, hopefully do well with that project. That's all I have. And any question for city manager, Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Rhodey, we talked a lot, a lot earlier about all this financing stuff and I had something. Just have a question about our return on investments on the money that we do have invested. And, and without belaboring it too much, what are we looking at for the $20 million that we have in the investment account? What's the return on the investment right now?
So, so we have, um, we use the three, three, uh, investment tools that are available to local government. State pool, uh, two, two other state pools. So all three are state pool qualified and we diversify our money evenly. So at any point in time, we have anywhere from 18 to 20, uh, in each of those three accounts. And that's our total cash. That's, that's cash on hand, that's reserves, that's all of our money that we don't need for operating, uh, and making payroll and those kinds of things.
So I, I take it the money that comes into those accounts, uh, the return on investment is actually divvied for. So if it's the unassigned goes to. So if it's the unassigned goes to that and so forth.
A great example, if, if the water utility has $3 million in there, whatever percentage that investment gets, goes, gets credit to the water.
So the 12 million or 11, whatever we have that's unassigned right now, roughly, what, what are we getting percentage wise?
I'd have to double check. Those, those rates went from almost nothing to now, you know, looking at five plus percent. So we're getting real money, we're getting real investment income on our money finally. But there were lots a year, you know, a couple of years ago, it was.
And so, and you said we had 20 million in general. What's the other eight million, nine million dollars that we have in there?
Again, that's all operating, that's all of our operating dollars. So when we get our, when we get the check from the county.
The rest, okay.
We, you know, we, we were heavy at the early part of the year when we get it and then it.
But that's not, that's not nine million extra in reserves. That's, that's just.
That, that's not reserve. We don't have 60 million in reserve. We have 60 million in investments.
60 million investments, okay. And then 20 million you said we had in reserves, that was.
We have 20 plus million in reserve for the general fund.
For the general fund.
Fund reserve.
Out of which 11 is.
Unrestricted, unassigned.
Unassigned, got you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you. Question is the second one that did not get approved on this grant. Refresh my memory, what was that for? How much money? And what are we going to do about it?
Hire a lobbyist.
No. So what was?
It was a stormwater reduction for the canal. I believe it was Canal 70. It was a, a part of a Westbrook, a bigger Westbrook flood risk reduction item. I believe it was 300.
363. I think it was 363.
But we did get 460 last year for Westbrook.
I'm talking about this year though. I want to make sure I'm clear. So what didn't get approved?
It was give or take five or 10,000. It was 360,000.
Okay. And what are we going to do? We just don't do it now? Well, I get, we don't get it, but we don't do, because that would have been a match anyway. That wasn't a complete prize. I mean, we're going to put some money up towards it. So are we not going to do that project now?
So when we had submitted the requests, it's usually for those, you, you have to be willing to at least put 20% skin in the game. And that's how, I think that's how it was when we submitted them.
I thought it was closer to 50, but it is 50, okay. And so that is my question. So we're not going to do that?
We do not have it as part of our capital project. If it's something the council would like to add, we could consider it. Or we could put it in our queue to ask for it for next year.
For next year. Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Young?
In carrying on with that, but we're still doing the other project. Okay. All right. Thank you. So. So my question for the city manager is the project that we have going. Am I interrupting? Sorry. The project that we have going, that we've had going for a while, also grant funded. But it was imperative that we finish that project by August. And we bet, we, we shook the dice and we bet that we were going to be able to do that. Can you tell me, are we on?
We have our A squad on it and we can get you a report at next council meeting. They continue to investigate the best possible solution with that grant money for us.
The best possible, no, this was the project we started and we were supposed to have it done by August.
Correct, for Westbrook.
No, a different project.
Talking over there, Stevenson and all.
Yes, we already started this project.
The CDBG Melbourne Estates.
Yes, and we had to have it done, yes.
So we have to have that completed by March of 24.
And we are on?
We are 40% complete as of June of 23. We are looking, we are looking good.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Just, I'm going to have to remember the name of that because I always want to ask you.
Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you were referencing the Westbrook flood risk reduction project from last year.
I finished that one.
Of which, yep, we have our engineers on and they're very close to having the solution that they're going to recommend and meet with the community to discuss.
All right, thank you. And then I wanted to thank you for sending Mark Picarello to the Vision Zero meeting. It was very nice. All the cities were very well represented. It was a very busy meeting. So thank you for sending Mark Picarello and for the chief, he sent Captain Page. So we had our finest there at that meeting. So thank you. Commander? Oh, no, Captain.
Commander Page.
I'm sorry, Commander Page. I called her Captain when I was there and she didn't correct me, so.
She'll, she'll arrest you later.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dittmore?
Yes, just since we were talking about Westbrook, I, Andrew was there, but for those who don't know, they, I want to say it was the last meeting. Was, I think it was the meeting in May for the Melbourne tollman. The board met and we, I spoke there at the meeting. I don't know if we even talked about this before, but we did get them to add to their budget, add a second pump back into their budget. So it was something I asked them to do. They voted to, actually, they added it to their agenda and actually voted on it to add that second pump back in to alleviate any flood risk. And I asked them to do that for this year and next year, waiting for that, the, for us to catch up and do the flood risk reduction project. So they did vote to do that, so that's good to go. So we, we got at least through next year. So thanks.
Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned at 8:14. Are we having a, are?